Good morning and welcome to the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting of August 9th, 2022. If we'd all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the agenda review?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Okay.
I'll move the agenda.
Kip moves.
Second.
Seconded by Kevin. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All right, we have first on the docket, we have public broadband expansion. Ms. Carey, Harvey, come on up.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning, Carey.
Morning.
Morning, Carey.
All right, so just to give a little bit of background, Blue Earth County Administration and IT have been working on Internet service providers offering services to Blue Earth Counties to increase broadband speeds offerings to meet Minnesota DEED goals of at least 100 megabits down and 20 megabits uploads fees before 2026. The Minnesota Legislature has funded the Minnesota Border Border Grants Program with DEED since 2014. This year, they awarded a maximum of $95 million that will be available for grants this round. Applications were due by 4:00 PM on August 4th. In mid-July, we sent out letters to nine ISPs inviting them to submit proposals for a public-private partnership in a broadband initiative. We received two ISPs that submitted proposals with responses with project details that they included in their border-to-border grant applications. With Blue Earth County's commitment of $500,000 in ARPA funds for broadband, it is our recommendation that county allocate $520 per passing for each project. A passing is any residential, commercial, agriculture, public structure possibly using Internet services. We have a couple of projects with Charter Communications that total 494 passings, and then we have a couple of projects with Consolidated Communications that total 466 passings. We request that the Board of Commissioners approve a resolution allocating ARPA funds pending the ISP's project being approved by Minnesota DEED for fiscal year 2022-23 Minnesota Border-to-Border Grant funding. Are there any questions about the proposal that we have in front of you?
Any questions for Carrie on the proposal?
I don't have any questions. We've talked about this several times at work sessions and a lot of stuff going on with it, so.
Great to get these people connected.
Yes, they're all either underserved or are unserved.
Right.
With these passings.
I'd move to approve.
Okay, Vance moves to approve. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Kip. Any discussion? And then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's a good move.
That doesn't mean we're going to give up on the rest of the county, right?
That is correct. That is correct. The second portion of that packet was an application affidavit, a resolution for the applicant. I don't know if I need to go over that at all with you guys to have that signed, but basically it is just saying that we have the legal authority to apply for financial assistance and institutional managerial and financial capability to ensure adequate project administration, and that we're not getting any kickbacks or anything, and then that would need to be signed by the chair.
I'll move approval.
I move by Kip. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Vance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Great.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Have a great day. All right. And oh yeah. Public Works.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning, Ryan.
Morning.
Not too busy of an agenda today, but we do have a handful of action items to take care of. The first action item for your consideration is the approval of the Blue Earth County, this is brand spanking new policy Title VI Plan, which is a nondiscrimination policy that's required for future federal aid funding. This is being carried down from the Federal Highway Administration through Mendat to the counties, so for future federal aid funds, we'll have to have this nondiscrimination and inclusion plan for limited English proficiency minority groups, et cetera. We were fortunate to have low enough numbers or percentages that we don't have to have some of our critical documents transcribed into other languages by the thresholds that they have, but it does require kind of data mining, US Census data, and I kind of took first cut at this and had some staff work with Mendat on going through it and cleaning things up. So we have submitted this to them already in draft format. They've kind of given it their approval, so it's ready for Commissioner approval. I won't read through it today, but was included in your packet for your review, so with that, I would recommend approval of that Title VI policy. I'm sorry, it's Title VI Plan.
Okay. Any questions or have a motion? I'll go over to approve. Kevin moves to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Kip. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Thank you. Action item number two for your consideration is a resolution authorizing right-of-way acquisition for County-Stated Highway 13. This is the project for 2023 that spans from US Highway 169 to County-Stated Highway Number One. I would recommend approval of the said resolution.
So. Second. Kevin, seconded by Vance. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
All right. Action item number three, resolution authorizing right-of-way acquisition on County-Stated Highway 26 from Cassaw 57 to Minnesota Highway 22, which is also a 2023 project.
I'll move approval.
Kip moves. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Vance, so second. Okay, everybody sees it there. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All right.
Thank you. And last resolution is in support of the City of Mankato's application for fiscal year 2023 funding for Highway Safety Improvement Program dollars for the improvement of the intersection of Hoffman Road and Victory Drive, which is County-Stated Highway 82. This project is not in our capital plan necessarily, however, if they were successful in obtaining the HSEP money, it would cover 80 to 100% of the construction project costs. There have been some serious injury crashes at the intersection, so it does make it eligible for these fund dollars. I don't know whether or not it'll be a successful application, but there's a relatively short turnaround that the applications are due by September 9th, so I'm hopeful that we're successful. The benefit of doing this project potentially in 2023 would be that we could ease some of the future, reduce future costs when we reconstruct the remainder of Cassaw 82 that we do have out in our capital improvement plan and leave for '24, '25, we have in our CIP. So it would take out that intersection and signal cost, so lower the project cost by up to about $1 million, and it would also help with traffic congestion, so that we're really only taking out that one major intersection in Mankato being Main Street if we didn't have to also do Hoffman at the same time or under the same project. So I think there's significant benefit if we are successful or if the city is successful in their application. With that being said, I would recommend approval of their HSEP funding application and the resolution of support.
Move to approve.
Seconded by Vance.
Seconded.
Seconded by Julianne. Okay, all right, anything else? All those in favor signify, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
All right.
Great.
So with that, we've got some additional just project updates and informational items for the County Board. Cassaw 4E Bridge Replacement, the project, and Cassaw, County Road 169, the bridges were open in late July, so we've got two of those bridges completed this year. The County Road 151 Bridge began driving piling yesterday. The majority of the road core grading is completed, so if you remember, they had to haul from the borrow site on one side of the bridge, haul across the old bridge, and effectively build the road core. So that's completed, they're driving piling for the new bridge, and that anticipated completion date is mid-October, so they've got some time out there, but it's a relatively low-traffic volume road, but important one. The 2022 Batumnas overlays have been completed, all work, so it's nice to have those checked off. Cassaw 1 from 9 to 90 is still going strong, although the curb has been placed throughout the project, and the subcontractor Boulderscape is, for the last week and a half, has been tying structural steel to start shooting the, you know, there's different steps to these walls that we're building for the soil net walls. The first step was GSI came in and actually did the soil net anchors, the grounded soil net anchors, the reinforcing steel cage and the first layer of shotcrete, and then effectively Boulderscape comes on, puts another layer of reinforcing steel that's tied to that kind of first structural layer of the wall, and they shotcrete about another eight inches of structural wall that'll help hold that together, and then they'll come back and they'll actually put on a facing. That'll be what they actually do, the architectural carving in for the finish.
So I drove that yesterday.
Yep.
Talked to some of the construction workers and let them know who I was and that I'd like to see it, and he said, "Oh, go ahead and go through." So I did. I see there's about maybe a quarter mile that's not paved at this time.
Correct.
Otherwise, it is drivable, easily drivable. I have my little car, so I know it was drivable. And I noticed on the top of the hill where they got the hill completed, it looks like the brick, you know, fake brick.
Big block.
Is that what all of it's going to look like?
Yep, so a lot of it's going to be very similar to that and the aesthetic we were trying to achieve that you've already got with the red jacket trestle piers as that quarryed limestone block, so we wanted to carry that in throughout the rest of the corridor. They actually proposed kind of a different facade, but it's going to closely reflect that quarryed limestone block look like we have with the big block walls that are in and also with the piers for the red jacket trestle.
Very great job look. I mean, it looks awesome, and the ability to drive that at speed, you can see it's going to make a huge difference.
Yeah, it's nice to see it coming together.
You know, the sharp curves and stuff are taken out, and it's just a very nice road, so excited to see it when it gets done.
Well, I'm appreciative of the board's patience, although this turnback project has been, I think we began the first phase in 2015 or '16, so.
It's been a while.
We've been working on it for a while. It's, you know, it's a massive undertaking, over $30 million worth of construction contracts, so for our smaller staff department, that's a lot of work in addition to our regular program, but we're getting there, and I'm looking forward to being done with this finally for something that I've been working on for the better part of a decade now, so.
You've got something to be proud of there.
Yes, thank you.
We've seen parts of it, and of course, you can get to the red jacket, you know, Valley Park there, and that's.
There's also some turf establishment that'll be continuing. There's a lot of this turf reinforcement mat that's kind of a really heavy-duty mat that goes in the higher ditch flow areas to prevent erosion, so those are time-consuming to install, so that's kind of a geotechnical engineering and higher-level turf establishment control that we're putting in along the project. And then they're also working on some fencing along the project, along the Ponkras Pond and some of those big block walls, so lots of activity taking place out there.
Really, they really look good.
Well, kudos to the staff and the mathwits.
Yes, thank you.
They did, they've done a great job on this.
If you follow mathwits, they have like weekly construction project posts, and they post quite a few photos of our project because there's so many different neat elements of it, so when the contractor's bragging about their work and our job, that's always a good thing, I think.
It's always a good thing.
County Stated Highway 7 in Mapleton, WW will be paving the final wearing course this week. All of the turf establishment has been completed, the trail has been paved, striping and signage are the only really significant work items remaining, so we're fairly confident that that'll be opened up within the next week or so.
Nice.
So getting that done before school resumed was our objective. We hit that on the head. It's been a nice, smooth little project. WW's done a good job. Our staff, the city's contractor, Holtmeyer, and the folks at Kraus Anderson and the contractor on the school project have done a nice job all working together to ensure that we can get the necessary construction equipment and materials in and out of the schools while still getting our projects completed. As you know, 10 and 72 in Vernon Center is delayed until 2023, really dependent on the city is driving the bus on that project, so I have not heard anything recently aside from the fact that it's been delayed until next year. 11 from 20 to 68, the majority of the culvert and tile crossings are completed, the storm sewer on the very east end by Minnesota Highway 68 is starting to go in. They're also beginning to full-depth reclaim the road. They've got about a third of it done, they're starting on the west end and then working to the east. They've got effectively most of the core material put on for the shoulder widening, and the ditches are somewhat shaped, so they've got a lot of work now to start putting the project back together. So that's the good news is that they're at that point, but it is a six-and-a-half-mile project, it's a new type of construction for R&amp;E, being a prime contractor, going fairly well, they're probably slightly behind, however, they're working at it, and they'll actually probably be hauling gravel here within the next week or so. So that's, again, is always a good sign when they get that reclaimed gravel and base material whung out, get the underdrain tiles put in, I think that's supposed to begin the end of this week, and then they can start again putting that new structural layers on for the new road. Cassaw 12 is actually kind of in a similar situation, the majority of the tile and culvert crossings are completed on the north half, so MPM is working on the north half first, and it's already been reclaimed, they're going to be hauling additional gravel by the end of the week out there as well. The fence contractor is relocating a significant chunk of the fencing that's along the airport property on kind of the south half of the project on the east side of the road, and they're going to begin stripping soil, topsoil on the south half, however, they will not close the road yet, they're just trying to get out ahead of things a little bit, so we do have that set that that airport access road, the airport drive is the flip point for the project, so they have to get the north half put back together before they can begin work on the south half. Cassaw 16 from the Millisour River to Cassaw 90, we had a public open house meeting on July 26th. I know Commissioners people in Brunder attended, and we had good public turnout to that meeting. I think the meeting all in all went fairly well. We did get some feedback from residents, mostly pretty positive, actually, they're excited and ready for the road to be improved, a couple where we're going to work with landowners to try to further mitigate damages and minimize our impact on them, through some ideas that they had, so we're moving forward with that. The Cassaw 13 project that we're designing from 169 to 1, we're anticipating receiving 90% plans from SRF by the end of the month. The bridge design is also moving along in parallel, I think we've talked about this, but the bridge funding, currently, we've got a funding application in Mendat, however, there were no bridge bonds authorized since late 2020, so the only bridge money comes out of a little portion of the lease motor vehicle sales tax, or the auto parts sales tax, I forget right now. However, it's like $12 million a year that goes into the state pot, which doesn't do the job.
Doesn't do much for the state of Minnesota.
Right, and so the bridge replacement costs, we want to do it all at once, so we are budgeting that if we can't get state bridge bonds to cover 50% of the bridge like they normally would, we'll either utilize our County-Stated Highway money or our local option sales tax dollars to replace the bridge in parallel with the project, because I think we believe it's pretty critical to do it all at once and minimize the impact on the people that live out there. Kind of a rip-the-band-aid-off approach.
Yeah.
26 from 57 to 22, we're anticipating 60% plans from Bolton Make by the end of August. We're working through access, storm sewer design, and lighting design components. Didn't look like a horribly challenging project, but there's a lot of items out there, you know, and we got into the drainage, and there were some, there were some old lines that ran out down into ravines and under buildings that were just kind of a nightmare scenario, so we're actually rerouting some of the storm sewer to do more of a stabilized single discharge point where we can have stronger control of it and better access to it, so that's one of the things we're dealing with. We're also looking at intersection lighting, and Mankato has a policy to light intersections, however, only about a half or a third of those intersections out there are actually city streets, and the other ones are township, so we're going to light all of these significant intersections just so we can be consistent with that corridor. The addition of the trail, working with some of the private landowners, working with the OFC who owns a chunk of the land, and they were good to meet with and talk about giving us an easement to put some of the trail on their property right at the edge, so I think that's a nice community benefit for their employees, for our residents, for everybody, so it's going fairly well. So those are kind of our two big projects for next year, maintenance items. I believe I included in your packet the proposed driveway pricing increases, so as we know, we've seen significant price increases for everything, whether it's diesel fuel, whether it's steel pipe, as well as gravel. So we have the proposed and current pricing for driveways, and I know we talked about this about a year and a half ago, and this shows what we're revising the pricing, the current pricing, so if we look at, say, a 50-foot pipe driveway is $1,000 currently for a 50-foot long pipe and the work to relocate the driveway, and really, that cost only covers our pipe cost and our gravel and material cost. We're doing these with our forces because we like to have control over how the work is completed and the quality that they're done to. Our crews do the best job at it, and they're the most conscientious, so we price it to be competitive so that if, as a landowner or resident, you want this done, it's not cost-effective to have somebody else do it because we just want to cover our costs and ensure that we can maintain good grades for ditches. But you can see on even the 40-foot, there's an increase from $850 to $1,100. On the 50-foot, there's an increase from $1,000 to $1,275, and on the 60-foot driveway, an increase from $1,150 to $1,450, and again, that's just covering our material costs.
Mr. Chair, do we have many that are put in not by county staff, whether it's another contractor or private landowner?
We have some. Generally speaking, it's very seldom we permit the landowner just to do it themselves because we do have to have the one-on-six running slopes for car launching just to meet the state aid design.
So is there a permit required to?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So just wanted to share that for your information. As far as maintenance activities, Sir Lines a lot, our striping contractor has done one round of maintenance striping, a second round should be happening later this month after our crews complete their seal coating and fog sealing operations. Max Johnson Trucking is hauling gravel for our maintenance gravel contract, and as you know, that covers about 100 miles of gravel roads every year to resurface them with the gravel, so we always have a crushing contract, and we always have the hauling contract, so the crushed gravel from last year gets hauled this year, and the crushed gravel this year is for next year's maintenance contract. Crews should be completing seal coating operations this week, so perhaps into next week, but you will see them seal coating Cassaw 12 from Highway 83 to Cassaw 17. Those are challenging roads to shut down or detour. We've learned that one thing about roundabouts, that they're pretty challenging to chip seal and do routine maintenance on because of traffic control gets fairly complicated through them, but our crews are figuring it out, doing a good job with it. They're also reshaping County Road 184 and replacing drainage pipes at Smith Mill, so right there as you come into town on the kind of the south side of Smith Mill. And they're also, you'll see them out in the rural parts beginning to apply calcium chloride for the second round of the contract prices that we do. We are having some material availability issues with calcium chloride, and we'll be making those applications as materials available. If we run out of material, we're just simply not going to be able to do it. We'll remain hopeful we can continue to complete that, and additionally, they're mowing out the right-of-way on the northern third of the county, so as you know, we do top cuts until August 1st or late July, and then we start the full mow out, so that controls noxious weeds, woody growth, you know, trees, shrubs, things like that that we don't want growing on our right-of-way before they become larger and problematic. We get about a third of the county done a year, we may be dialing it back to about a quarter of the county, depending how much goods have accomplished this year due to staffing shortages that we've struggled to keep seats in the mowers, so. The last item I have on my agenda for discussion is a Rapidan dam update, so just as for the board's information, on July 25th, we received a letter from the FERC which acknowledged the transfer of licensure exemption from Rapidan Hydro to Blue Earth County. We subsequently electronically filed a letter acknowledging acceptance of that licensure exemption and provided the necessary contact information sheet. On August 2nd, we completed the emergency action plan, which was electronically filed with the FERC. Digital copies have been distributed to key stakeholders. Public Works continues maintenance and operations of the dam surveillance. This is all somewhat repeats of last month's, just as reminders, so we have the routine monitoring on operation costs. We still eventually, when I think we have more direction, will need to follow up with US Fish and Wildlife Service and the MPCA, and then have those recurring maintenance tasks, including the five steel tainer gates repairs and some of those other items that will be coming upon us next year, so. Be happy to answer any questions on that, otherwise I won't fully read those because I know you've heard those same ones before.
And we got a work session next week?
Correct.
Next weekend, so.
Discuss the survey results.
Do we want to make a motion for the new driveway approaches, or is that to be done?
Typically, fees are approved by the board, so I wasn't sure if Brian was ready to have those enacted, or?
I'd be more than happy to, yeah, I can put it more into a resolution next year if we have to make a provision to them.
You want to just move these, or you want to bring a resolution?
If you would like to move these right here, right now, that'd be great.
This is what you're going to present?
Yes.
I'm comfortable with this, everybody knows that costs are going up, so.
Yep.
This is just to be done. I would move it. I'll second.
Seconded by Vance on the fees. Okay, all those in favor signify, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
All right. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you, Ryan.
Have a good day.
All right. All right, I have the county, do we have a, yeah, county attorney. Mr. Pat?
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Morning.
If anybody has any specific questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. Just a couple of brief updates. As I reported before, that coming out of COVID, the various times, we were one of the Guinea pig counties to keep things moving through the court process. Our district is number one in the state for clearance rates, and our backlog has really been taken care of pretty well compared to some other counties in the state, we are sitting very good. So with that, I really don't have anything to add. If anybody has any questions, again, I'm more than happy to answer them.
You have any, may I have any questions? Do you have any for him today?
According to the chart that's right up there, it just shows that felonies and gross misdemeanors and different things are going down.
They are going down. This is, and this is the time of year when school starts back in session, when college starts back in session, that's typically when we get an uptick in our numbers from an overall perspective.
But this is overall over the years?
Yep.
And that's pretty positive.
It is pretty positive, and I appreciate that comment, Mr. Commissioner, that it's unfortunate that we're seeing the trend that they're seeing nationally where the more of the petty crimes are going down, but the more serious crimes are going up. We have had, you know, I've talked about this before, the rash of overdose death cases involving fentanyl, the firearms cases, we've had a drastic increase in the last couple of years in cases involving firearms, so those are two areas that are more time-consuming than usual, for example, but no, it's positive that crime is going down, but we are seeing that where the more serious stuff is going up.
Well, knock on wood that it keeps on.
Thank you, Pat. All right. Okay, we have, I guess, we have, we're already at the minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, first item is County Board Minutes for July 26th.
So move it. It's been moved by Kevin. Everybody's ready? We have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kip. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
I'll move the bills.
Vance moves the bills. Somebody?
Second.
Second. Any questions to Bob? Any, uh, questions to Bob?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chair, at this time.
Nope, me neither.
All right.
Any questions during that?
No. Moving along, well then, all those in favor of approval of paying the bills, say aye.
Aye.
Post carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, um, item number six in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. We just have informational items for the board today. Uh, first is a promotion of an appraiser to, um, a supervisor of services and records in our property environmental resources area. So we've initiated recruitment to refill the appraiser position. We also had a promotion of a maintenance technician one in our public works department to a maintenance technician two. So we've initiated, uh, recruitment to refill the one position. Uh, we filled a correctional officer, uh, position as well as a children's services case aide in our human services department. Uh, as well as a, uh, property environmental resources specialist two in our, uh, property and environmental resources department. Did have a resignation of a facilities maintenance technician, and so we have initiated recruitment to refill that position. We also had a resignation of a part-time correctional officer in our jail, so we've initiated recruitment to fill that. And lastly, we had a resignation of a legal assistant in the county attorney's office and have initiated recruitment to refill that position. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have on any of those items.
Thanks, Bob. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
All right.
Right. Uh, item number seven in your packet is a memo regarding, uh, County Ditch Thirty-five. Asking the board today to, uh, set a hearing for September thirteenth. You know, this would be a continuation of, um, previous meetings that have been held on County Ditch Thirty-five. And so looking to set that hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Kevin. Discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number eight in your packet is an application for an exempt gambling permit by the Minnesota Deer Hunters Association, the Bend of the River Chapter. Uh, they have an event that, uh, they plan to hold out in Garden City. Looking for the date, but I, in October.
Till fifteen.
Yes. And so it's been reviewed and, uh, recommended for approval here today.
Moved to approve.
And moved by Vance?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post carries.
Item number nine in your packet then is a memo regarding, uh, contract for on-call law, law enforcement services for the city of Lake Crystal. Uh, the board will recall at the last meeting, Captain Barta was in front of the board with a similar, uh, agreement for the city of Eagle Lake. And at that time he mentioned that there was, um, discussion with the city of Lake Crystal for the same sort of services, same rates, um, associated in the contract. And so, um, bringing it here today for the board's consideration.
I would move to approve.
Vance moves to approve. Second.
Second.
Okay. I guess all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post carries.
Item number ten in your packet then is a memo regarding the operational enhancement grant for the Veterans Service Office. Um, Michael would be here today, but he was called out to Washington for the signing of the PACT Act and so.
Good for him.
Yeah, I'm filling in for him, but, uh, as has been, um, the practice for the last number of years, uh, we have this grant opportunity through the Department of Veterans Affairs at the state for twelve thousand five hundred dollars effective for the period from July first of this year through June thirtieth of twenty-three. And so, uh, recommending the acceptance of the attached grant resolution.
I'll move to approve.
Vance moves acceptance of the grant.
Second.
Second by Kevin. Discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post carries. All right.
That's all I have for you, Mr. Chair.
Looks like a busy day, but you followed right through that, Mr. Chair.
Well, we have an amazing chair.
You know, guys, remember this is, uh, live, this is, uh.
We know, it's recorded.
Uh, okay, let me get, okay, then who should be first? Let's go with, um, well, let's start with Kevin, go on down the line.
Okay, since our July twenty-sixth, uh, board meeting that afternoon, we held the, uh, JD forty-nine hearings. Attended that, uh, the twenty-seventh, our, uh, True Transit Advisor Committee had their third meeting of the year. Uh, spent four days at the fair, got, uh, good, uh, interaction there, a lot of, uh, dam questions, road projects and things like that. On the third, I attended our, uh, Public Works, uh, meeting, uh, information meeting for the residents. On the fourth, we had a CD fifty-six update meeting as well as Soil and Water Conservation District had their, uh, their August meeting. And then on the fifth of August, um, we had an onsite meeting concerning CD fifty-two. That completes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Kevin. All right, let's go with Julianne.
All right, since our last meeting, I attended the public open house for the Public Works facility, the conversation. I have not attended any other committee, advisory board meetings.
All right. Vance?
All right. Well, um, on August third, I attended the department head meeting and the public works, public meeting. Um, on the fourth, I had a South Central TZD Zoom meeting. And then, uh, that afternoon I had a Blue Earth County Library Board meeting. On the eighth, which is yesterday, um, I attended the announcement that Bray Park would be the, uh, uh, area for the Minnesota Governor's Fishing opener.
It's exciting.
So that was kind of exciting to see out there. And then, uh, last evening we had a community farm board meeting at the community farm. And I sent, sent you each of the, uh, what has been donated. But so far this summer, the community farm has donated three hundred and eighty-five pounds of food to the Echo Food Shell, CADA, and feeding our community partners. This has included herbs, onions, beets, okra, cucumbers, and lots of beans. And there's more to come in addition to, the addition of more mulch and compost this year has made the plants grow, grow really well. And we've had plant donations from farms in the regions, which really has helped our season get started. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, thanks Vance. Kip?
Very nice. Well, Mr. Chair, uh, JD forty-nine was already mentioned. Kevin was able to get that wrapped up. It's something that's been ongoing for quite a while. Mark and I both attended the open house at the same time. I'm not sure if anybody else was there for County Road sixteen, which was mentioned. Uh, like Ryan said, there was a relatively good turnout of people and a lot of good feedback. Another challenging piece of road that we'll be working on. Had my MRCI board meeting, nothing unusual going on there. Things are going strong. Brian Benchouf, the CEO, will be retiring at the end of this year, so we are in a search to hire a new CEO up there and they have a committee together to work forward on that. I also attended the department head and I was out at the public works, uh, open house for the public shop. Uh, I thought the conversation went very well. I mean, we got, uh, some more feedback, some things we can chase. So, uh, look forward to the next meeting for that. And then I was over to the fair for just a little bit and then a parade. That's the end of my report, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thanks, Kip. I've got a few things to add, uh, for, um, after our board media at a forty-nine ditch, I was there. And then the, like with Kip, we went to the open house on six, Cassa sixteen. And then, uh, on, uh, that Thursday, the opening day of the fair, I ended up, I, I went there and didn't think I was going to stay so long, but I stayed. I helped close it down, didn't I, Kevin? I got more enthusiastic. A lot of people from Mankato there, you know, maybe more so as vendors and so forth, but, yeah, it was good. Then, um, um, had on, uh, let's see here. And we had the, um, uh, next week, the, um, they had the, uh, well, we, I went to the Kurt, yeah, Kurt Johnson Retirement Gathering and then had the, um, that day. And then on the third, went to the, we had the department heads and then had, uh, public workshop, uh, neighborhood gathering, of course we had, so. Uh, that, I think, let's see here, that does, yeah, that includes mine.
We were actually, we both forgot the swearing in of Judge Weeks.
That's right.
County Attorney Pat McDermott was at it.
We had Judge Weeks.
Very exciting. I've not been invited to one of them yet, so it was a neat process.
Right, that was the last one. Yep, sounds good. And everything else for the good or the order? All right.
I'll move to adjourn.
Kevin, Kip moves to adjourn and Vance, second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post carries. We are adjourned.
Good job, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, yeah.